Welcome to the Chapakua Central School District Board of Education. We've done executive session, we've done a work session, so we've already opened the meeting, we've already done the pledge, and we can go right to the president's report. So my gratitude moment for today has to do with the theater programs in our district. We've had a great showing of Matilda at Bell this past week, and I know that Anastasia, if I'm not mistaken, is in two days.
Yes.
And we do a lot of call-outs, do a lot of groups, but we haven't done the arts as much as we probably should have, so I want to express my gratitude to performers, parents who are very involved, including a couple up here, in making some of these things happen, as well as, of course, the staff. I know for myself, as a theater kid growing up, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have the career that I have without having had the experiences I had in theater. It was very important to my growth and upbringing, so just putting out some appreciation about that, and thank you for listening. On the agenda tonight, we have the remaining sections of our budget to go into, but before we do that, we've got an update about where things stand with the Seven Bridges International Day and the concerns about that that were brought to us. And the late-breaking thing that's not on the agenda is that during exact, the board decided that we were going to adopt a resolution right now during the president's report 1.1.1, so I'm going to read it, since this wasn't on the agenda, and it's the following. "Be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby appoints Steven Latino Esquire of Shaw, Pearls &amp; May &amp; Lambert LLP to investigate and report to the Board of Education and Superintendent regarding the facts and circumstances involving the International Day event at Seven Bridges Middle School held on March 6, 2025." So I will move 1.1.1, and can I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion about this? I'll just say that I think it's important to note that you can expect the board to respect the privacy rights of both our staff and families in this process, and we think this is the right step to do that. So all those in favor? All opposed? No? Okay. And Dr. Ackerman, do you want to address kind of where you have things at this point, kind of coming out of last week?
Sure, so there were a few action steps that we discussed at the end of public comments, so I just want to provide an update. So we did have a conversation with the PTA Executive Council or executive team, and we talked about ways that we can partner together to support large-scale programming in the future, and agreed that over the summer, we should meet and talk about that, because it would, it's important for the district to really anchor these events, probably in a different way than we have in the past, just based on where we are right now. We also discussed, you know, some feedback around newsletters and other areas that, you know, that as we've navigated the past two years have resulted in discussions between the district and the PTA, and then, you know, committing to really have deeper conversations this summer as we plan forward for next school year. Is that a pretty good summary?
Yeah, I was there as well. I thought it was very productive, and it was clear the PTA is looking for more support from the district team, and I was pleased to hear Dr. Ackerman say they're, they're ready to do that, and to be able to have more oversight and take more of the burden of what it takes to pull off a good event. That was great.
And then the other thing that Andrew and I did was, we met with our social media team, we reviewed what, what happened and the concerns that we received last week. We also reviewed the district's neutrality policy, and then we talked about a layered approach for Bell International Day and the Career Day with our eighth grade to provide some administrative support and oversight regarding how we're using social media to share what, how, what was accomplished on those days with our kids. And then the other thing I wanted to share with you is that our principals all sent out communications to their buildings, just reminding our staff of Policy 4060, and that is the policy that has our process if we're going to bring outside speakers into the school building, so we, we asked them to reiterate that policy across the district and to remind our, our staff that the principals need to be involved in any decisions where we're going to have parents or other outside speakers in our classrooms talking to our kids. We've had, we have two trainings or two opportunities for, learning opportunities for the administrative staff. One is scheduled for this Friday, and that is with a Muslim community organization, and then we have another one scheduled for Monday with the American Jewish Committee. So those are two updates. And then, of course, as the community knows through the resolution that you just adopted, we'll be working with our attorney to review what happened at International Day and to develop some recommendations, which I'm sure will translate into some conversations with the policy committee. And so those are my updates at this time, and I know I've had a few parents email me, and I've done my best to respond to everyone that has gotten back to me. And at this point, I just, I feel like we have a process that needs to be followed, and, and so I hope that everyone can understand that in moving forward here, we're going to follow the process, and we're going to allow our attorney to really look into and provide their assessment of the situation in a report at a future date, based on his review.
Christine, will you be able to highlight that slide in the week?
Uh, we can talk about that. Like, we can, we can, maybe we can put the Board of Education meeting, we usually have like a section where we do this president's update, so maybe we can cut a clip and put it in there, if that's what the board would like us to do.
Christine or Ryan could answer this. Just for clarification, the PTA Executive Council, is that the CPTA Chair and the Vice Chair, or is there a larger cabinet in that discussion? And Ryan, was there another board member there?
No, there was not another board member there. We had the executive committee, which is made up of reps from each of the, each of the school's PTA teams, so I don't know.
So just the chairs?
How many people in total?
Yeah, it's, I, this is a meeting I've gone to every week, I mean, every month, so it's, for my, it's the PTA leadership in each building, and then the district leadership, that's who's, that's who's at the meeting.
So that's chairs and vice chairs from every building?
Mm-hmm. And then sometimes they have other members of, like, set, other committees that they have attend, that's just depending on what the topics are.
Okay, so they have to get invited to be there?
Well, I don't know what the PTA's procedures are, but I know that I'm invited to go every month, and so like, for example, Josh and I are going to go in April and talk about the budget, so.
So I think going forward, if, because you're the liaison, because you're the president, I think if you want to just kind of give us a report back on, like, when we do committee reports, that'd be helpful for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Brian, did you have anything else you wanted to go over?
No, I think we can keep going into the superintendent's report.
So we'll just do our superintendent report now, and I just, I wanted to share that we have done our sense of belonging survey for both our students and our staff, and we're at the point where we're going to release on Sunday a webinar to families describing the results of our student belonging survey, and so I just, I wanted to do just a few slides here, just to give the board an overview of some of what we're seeing. But then, of course, Adam, Dr. Adam Schonberg is going to do a larger presentation and push it out to the community, and our secondary staff have already seen these slides with our principals, and then they're going to be going into this on superintendent conference day a little bit deeper. So we've been administering this survey for a few years now, because it helps guide the work of our DET and our SETT, and so we've, there are three major categories that we've asked students to share their thinking with us on. So the first is their sense of belonging, diversity and inclusion, and cultural awareness and action. And this year, we ask additional questions around relationships, challenging feelings, and positive feelings in relation to the school. And Seven Bridges Bell and Greeley, data is, is, can be broken out by building, but it's also, you can look at it in the aggregate, which I'm going to share with you tonight. And so you can see that on the questions that we've asked year after year, we're trending in the, in the, in a positive direction, and if you look at the green dots, you'll see that we're either at or above the national comparison, which is where we would want to be. We also, if you look at the subcategories, you can see the change over time since we began administering the survey in '21, '22. And then in the, in the questions that we asked for the first time, you can see in the subcategories how our kids were feeling about being a part of our community in terms of relationship buildings, challenging feelings, and positive feelings in relation to school. And so these, these results are, we always want to be higher, but you can see that we're either above the national comparison in these categories, or slightly above the national average. And so this is, this is just an overview. Adam Schonberg is going to do a fuller presentation for families and go into the subcategories, but I just want you to understand some of the work that our faculty is looking into in supporting our kids as we move forward here. And then the other thing that I wanted to share is that we, in the past Sunday version of the week, we had pushed out a video of what literacy looks like in our school district based on feedback from the board, and so I wanted Adam to talk through that with you tonight.
So a few months back, we had invited the Board of Education on a tour of our literacy programs and walked you, you know, various board members through our various elementary schools to see the program, and the board had shared that it may be helpful for parents to have the opportunity to take a peek in, in a similar way, and we decided we could reach the, the largest number of parents by doing this through a virtual tour. So this tour, this virtual tour, it's about a 20-minute video, and it captures snippets or vignettes in our classrooms across the different grade levels, K through four, with the different components of our literacy program, and we have a variety of Chapakua teachers, thanks to the teachers that open their classrooms to let us, allow us to take some video of them, and we put it together into a video so parents can see that. And then in addition, should I go on and share the Gravity part, or did you want to?
Yeah, no.
So Gravity Goldberg, we have worked with her as a consultant over the years. She also did a presentation during our winter retreat for the Board of Ed and the administrators, and again, the board had shared that it may be helpful for parents to also hear from Gravity. So we have an opportunity on March 27th, which is next week, at 9:30. There is an RSVP link in the week. We just want to do that to make sure we have the right-sized space for the number of people that will participate. So we're really inviting our K-4 parents, and Gravity is going to share a little bit about the science of reading, and also curriculum shifts that have happened kind of on a larger scale, and she's very good at taking some very complex science of reading research and breaking it down, so it's, you know, consumable and a little bit easier for folks to understand. So that'll be 9:30, probably here in the academic comments, it'll definitely be at Greeley, depending on the size of the group, on March 27th.
So as it, as Ryan had highlighted in the president's report, we have a lot happening in the district. We have our major Greeley Theater event this coming week. We have our kindergarten registration, we have a bath night, we have our budget forum for our community on Zoom next Monday night at 6:00, and we have another Board of Education meeting next week as we continue to work through our budget process. So now I want to transition over to Mario and Josh, who will be presenting different components of the budget this evening, so just give us one second as we reorient ourselves up here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mario Martinez. I'm the Director of Facilities here in Chapakua, and I'll be presenting to you our proposed facility budget for the next school year. In this presentation, we'll go over some basic information about our district, about the facilities department itself, some projects we have planned, security measures, money, how we're saving some money for the district, as well as the proposed budget itself at This district is a community for learning. We are a nationally renowned suburban public school system categorized by highly motivated students, a broadly educated and talented staff, and an actively involved parent community. This facilities department specifically is involved in all aspects of this district and our community. Studies have shown that there's a direct correlation between the state of the school's facilities and the well-being of staff and students. Our department plays a crucial role in academic performance of the students, as well as the emotional and mental stability of all faculty and staff. If you're in a comfortable place, you tend to just do better. The next few slides will describe some general information regarding our high school, two middle schools, and three elementary schools. We'll begin with Horace Greeley. Horace Greeley is an enormous campus with over 400,000 square feet. Highlights of this campus are our SRC, our steam building, our GLC, our athletic facilities, and our great grass and turf fields. Of course, Greeley is also a giant undertaking, so there's a big staff here with two supervisors and 14 workers here, specifically at the high school. Both our middle schools are also incredible buildings, Seven Bridges being the newer of the two buildings, which is now 20 years old, and what I like to call the district's castle, Robert E. Bell. Robert E. Bell was built in the 1920s and still here and working. So the highlights of these buildings are also their steam centers, their GLCs, Bell's accessibility to town for the students after school and whatnot, and both buildings' ability to host all town and recreation events on the weekends and after school. Each building is a little bit over 175,000 square feet, and staffing for those buildings are two supervisors and six workers. Lastly, our elementary schools are smallest buildings, but just as important, these buildings are where our children begin their educational journey. Each building is a little bit over 100,000 square feet, with one supervisor and four workers. Highlights of these buildings are their GLC, as well as their newly surfaced playgrounds that we just did last summer for the children to play on. To really hammer down the point on how big and intense this district is and how much it is used, these next, these next few slides will cover some of that information. All in all, this district has over a million square feet of buildings. That's big. And as you know, all community members, our buildings seem to be open 24/7. Monday through Friday, our buildings open up between 6:30 and 7:00 a.m. and close between 11:00 and 11:30 p.m. The, the weekends, we have no break either, because each building's averaged eight to 12 hours of being open, depending on facility use per the building. So in order to take care of everything, we need a small army. The facility department are always the first ones in and last ones out daily. Our department consists of 10 supervisors, six maintenance workers, 37 cleaners and custodians, and one amazing secretary. Hey, Jo, I think she's watching tonight. Our maintenance department supports all our schools district-wide, as well as covering the 200 acres of land we have, and our cleaners and custodians clean an average of 35,000 square feet daily, which is 10,000 square feet above the average of Westchester County We currently have over 700 pieces of HVAC equipment. After the summer, our cafeterias and gyms will all have new HVAC systems. Maintaining these HVAC systems is a task in itself. Luckily, we signed a maintenance agreement with Atlantic Westchester last year to help minimize cost and keep these units running effectively and efficiently. And as you can see from the information and the previous slides, there is a huge demand on this department regarding square footage, acreage, and facility use itself. With our transfer to capital, we have a few plans. The first plan would be to potentially build a guard booth in the front of Horace Greeley. This booth would be located right by the speed bump up there between the ed center and the senior parking lot. Roughly, the booth itself could anywhere be as large as six by eight, as small as maybe four by six. It'll be seated on a concrete slab, will run electric ed data from the ed center, so that would mean some trenching through the driveway, through the sidewalk into the basement of the ed center, and that's where we'd make all the connections. Two arm gates would be installed as well on this booth for egress and entry, and bollards, which would protect the booth from any car accidents and whatnot. Next would be an option of also paving, which we do through transfer to capital and/or in-house budget. The biggest paving projects we have lined up are the senior parking lot at Horace Greeley, as well as the main entrance driveway to Bell Middle School. For those of you who aren't familiar with Bell Middle School, it's the driveway on Center Street that is where the flagpole is and the porcupine share, where the morning drop-off is for the students. Um, what do you, we could have questions as we go on, that's fine. You have questions? I'm hoping the back arrow is what. Sure, so the, what we can do in the senior parking lot is make the parking spots a little wider. What, what that's going to entail is now you're going to lose 20 to 30 spots.
I know that Sandy has spoken to Mario about this, and they, before they lay the lines down, because she also has some concerns about kids navigating the lot, so they're in discussions about how we're going to reline this once the paving project is done, if it's approved.
There's a lot of family kids, because, and speaking of not only the kids who are here during the day, but obviously, as mentioned, like, their families leaving our facility, and there are a lot of school, cars that can pass through school buses, these are in the lot on the regular, and the lot can't really accommodate it, so I know it's a trade-off, right? That if you're giving up two spots, or if, but I think probably at least we're, kind of, kind of, whether they're in fashion for the lot.
You know, we definitely make the space a little bit wider, and then you figure out where to put the other parking spots throughout the campus.
Yeah, Hillary, I, I don't know if you remember, this was a concern last year and was brought up even actually at one of the office hours, and I think there's pros and cons to it, right? You lose space, but then maybe they'll stop bumping into each other, because there's more space, but there's no guarantee. It's like...
I think that there have been some years when we didn't have enough spots for the number of kids we had already, so losing 20 could be logistically hard for you to find 20 spots somewhere else.
I can literally, this next year, when the senior class will be the highest, they'll spend quite a while, right? Like, 320 instead of the typical 280.
How many spots are in that lot currently?
Right now, we have almost 200 spots in that.
200?
Almost.
But the kids also use spots in the front, and, you know, they have to explore whether or not we can move more faculty in the back, because we don't want students in the back to open up more spots in the front. So I know that that's on the radar in terms of having conversations around that, because the last thing we want to do is deny seniors the opportunity to park on campus, too, so.
So is that something that's going to be made official? I know we're doing it sort of unofficially, because we have different signs, and sometimes, I know Ivan am fearful parked in the wrong spot, and my car's going to get towed, like, we're having a meeting, but I know that unofficially, where we didn't change signs or anything, students are parking there, so is that something we're going to do officially?
Yeah, I, I had been talking to Sandy and Mario about redoing the lot and the spaces and the signage, because it's not accurate right now, because we do have seniors able to park in certain spots for carpooling, and so that's all, we're looking at all that over, over the summer. A lot of it is going to hinge on this project here, because that's going to dictate how we use the other spots on campus. I mean, for the first time, we've moved everyone, everyone in the back is faculty, because we have a, a gate back there to, to address some of the safety concerns that we've had, and so now we have some different opportunities to use the spaces in a diff, in, in other ways, so I think instead of changing things for this year, I think if this project does go through, it gives us the opportunity to make some shift for next year.
So, Mary, also, just for clarification, so this is not on, this is a special project? This is not under ONM?
This could be via ONM and the transfer to capital, depending on what happens with the guard booth.
So, but this particular paving, I thought it was usually under ONM.
So paving, we have a paving budget, so it would be under ONM, but when it's this much paving, the costs get astronomical, so we try, we try to use some of the transfer to capital to help with the paving costs as well.
So it's like shared?
Yes.
Then?
That, that's what happened on West Orchard.
Correct, and Seven Bridges, the whole driveway from Seven Bridges Road to the stop sign all the way up. Go on. Um, so district-wide facility projects that we have, that are pretty much annually, we always screen our gym floors down, that's a quick sanding down and a couple of top coats to polish them up. We always sand the, one of the gym floors down completely, repaint the lines, and re-coat the floor. Last year, that school was West Orchard. This year, we're planning on doing it to Douglas Graffling. Every year, we do a different school. We're also planning to remove the electronic partitions that are left in our district. Those are now in two at Bell, one at Seven Bridges, and one at West Orchard, and replace them with partition curtains, which are similar to what we have down at the Horace Greeley main gym. The problem with electronic partitions is that they require inspections, and if they fail the inspection, we also don't get a seal for the building, and the repairs on these are very expensive, so curtains don't require inspections, and we can do repairs at house.
How many do we have?
Electronic partitions, two at Bell, one at Seven Bridges, and one at West Orchard. We'll also repaint the parking lot lines throughout the district, as well as the traffic lines. We began this year to replace all our two-by-four ceiling grids to two-by-twos, which help us, which makes the ceilings more accessible to do work beyond, between the ceiling and the rooftop. It also allows us to install our new LED flat panel two-by-two lighting. Examples of what we've done in changing these ceiling grids over are the K-building hallways, as well as Roaring Brook lobby entrance. It just makes it look a lot cleaner, and it's easier to do work with that.
Everything remaining to this year, or is it that?
It's an ongoing, yeah, yeah. We started this year, we're going to continue going.
So it'll be a couple of years?
Yeah, before everything gets replaced, yeah. Um, so specific projects per school, we're looking to renovate a little bit the back storage for athletics behind D-Gym, install some new lights in there, and, and paint it and fix it up nice. We're also looking to make the courtyard more accessible and more usable for students, potentially building a patio with some benches there, and also trying to repave some of those walkways at the Horace Greeley courtyard. At Bell specifically, we need to repair and replace the walkway coming from South Greeley Ave up to the steps going up to Bell. We tear up, so that's been kind of patched up with blacktop on top of blacktop. We rip that all out and make just a nice concrete path all the way from where that digital sign is to when staircases by the playground, as well as renovating the back storage in the rear gym. We'd have to renovate that and make it actually climate-controlled, so whatever's kept in there is kept accordingly and working properly. At Seven Bridges, we want to give the upper and lower commons a bit of a facelift, paint the walls, and rip up the old carpets and install new carpets, as well as the partitions are both at middle schools and the elementarys, and at West Orchard. So the elementary school's got a lot of attention last year with the bond projects and all the HVAC stuff, so we will continue doing basic painting and maintenance repairs throughout the school year as we always do. At Roaring Brook, we'll continue replacing some of the old water fountains through our newer water fountains, as well as repairing some of the railroad ties that are chipped and broken on our playgrounds. At West Orchard, we'll create a handicap parking spot in the back parking lot, as well as clear out a path for emergency vehicles to a gate that's behind West Orchard. We have to do that about three or four times a year with heavy-duty machinery. And West Orchard's the other school with the partition in the gym. Graffling is actually the last elementary school that is going to get their roof replaced, so by the end of this summer, all our elementary schools will have roofs that are less than three years old, which is incredible, especially when they last 20, 25 years, that gives us a nice head start. We will replace the stage curtains in the cafeteria and assist in rebuilding the butterfly garden that was unfortunately demoed when we had to run new power for the HVAC units in the gym and the cafeteria. So sustainability is always on the forefront of this department's mind when we're buying, when we're purchasing equipment and/or doing projects. Last year, we bought our first electric vehicle. We plan on buying our second one this coming school year. We also plan on buying some electric carts to replace our diesel and gas-powered Gators, UTVs that we use daily. These electric carts could be used daily for athletics, for our day-to-day use, as well as for events like graduation. We're looking to purchase also a hybrid spider lift, which this is a, like, I like this a lot, so it's, it, it runs on battery and diesel, so we could use it indoor or outdoor, and it's a spider lift because of legs. You could put this lift on unlevel ground, so you have to go into the wood and do tree where we drive this right there, and the legs itself levels the machine out. You could, we could use this for parking lot lights, we could use this for any interior gym, it's 34 inches wide, so if it's through any 36-door entrance, and the fact that it's battery and/or diesel.
Interesting, I'd usually rent this.
We always rent lift.
Spend a significant amount of rental on it. Significant amount of rental on it.
Gas or diesel, you know, like the little.
Speaking of things, I would like to get any return on the ones we have before we're.
So I'm looking into the board policy. Um, I don't know exactly, but I'd be looking into trade, even just like what we do with, with our trucks, potentially trade those in as a down payment to the new truck. Uh, yes, that would be an option. What we're trying to replace is, you know, those like green gators and the orange cabotas that the schools use. Uh, the main department still needs those because they're just heavy duty power and they could tow certain other equipment.
Where would you charge them?
The electric carts, uh, we could put them behind the gym uh, by that steel garage, lower L building. Uh, we definitely charge all these inside. Uh, the electric van we currently have gets charged up at the pole barn. Um, we could, if we're going to purchase another one, it would probably be designated to the high school as their, and we probably put a charger in low style with a safe box so nobody could use it.
With the scissor lift, um, you said we usually rent them. Is it going to be a cost savings over time to buy?
Time, yes. It's a, it's a, it's, it's expensive at first, but it's also um, when we do projects like changing the parking lot lights. We don't rent the lifts for one. So now I have to wait until 10 of them go out to justify the $10,000 rental of a lift. Having this installed, the minute something goes out, we fix it immediately in the course of the day.
How much is it?
A hundred and forty thousand dollars.
How often are we renting them in the past year?
We rent them probably five or six times a year.
And you said it was 10,000, correct?
But it's not just for um, the parking lots. If we need to work on the gyms, if we need tree work specifically, it's, it's almost impossible.
So what you're saying is we'll use this more than we have been.
Oh, yeah, correct. Yes, this will be used at least monthly.
So, correct. Were you renting it five times a year and maybe you needed it 10 times a year?
Yes. We, we hold off on renting it to not constantly have to rent it and incur that cost.
Do you need special, um, I don't know, training or licenses to operate this? I, I, I don't know. I, this is a real question.
Yes. Yeah, no, 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 not, not a certain certificate, but we, we, I will have the name toward a class of that where we'll, which will safely, you know. Uh, strapped onto it. So yes, they, they will take classes on that.
I didn't know if, when we rented, it came with a s- somebody who was certified to operate it or not.
No, no.
I don't know.
When, when you rent it, they drop it off on a trailer and say, this is yours.
Where do we keep this thing to make sure the kids don't access it?
The, the, the lift, we keep it up at the pole barn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. And just, yeah, and just that only people with certain titles who have specific training are permitted to operate heavy machinery like this.
Just when you drive by the highway, you see, you see a lot of these lists that are already creamed up. So nobody can get on there. We'd probably keep it inside. So it's locked up in a way so nobody could, so nobody could. We've been installing uh, newer HVAC equipment with heat pumps. Uh, these heat pumps run on electric. They don't need gas or um, oil. They're more efficient than our older units running on steam and hot water. And we're also um. Trying to find cleaning and disinfection solutions that are, that are greener for the environment. This company Viking Pure Solutions has. Environmental friendly cleaning solutions that are just as powerful. Some of those are more heavily chemically based cleaning solutions. Um. I think four or five schools in Westchester have already gone fully with Viking Pure Solutions in their schools as their. Cleaning chemicals for the, for, for the district. Uh, safety and security is one of my top priorities here as director and for the facility department as a whole. I mean, our department handles arrange from doing the door locks to the cameras, the staffing security, to pretty much the basic infrastructure of all our schools and safety of our faculty, staff and children. Um, our systems are probably one of the most technologically advanced that I've seen within other schools. Um, we also have, we're lucky to have an SRO at each level of our schools, which is one at the high school, one at the middle schools and one at the elementary schools. We're very lucky to have Michelle here, Lenell at Seven Bridges and Bell, and Josh over at the three elementary schools.
So just, we're keeping, uh, recommending, we're keeping our current structure moving forward into the next year's budget. Okay, sorry, Mario.
Uh, we'll continue to work closely with first responders as well as uh, PNW BOCs to make and adhere to all the protocols to make our schools safer as well. Um, testing our systems, uh, facilities department members that each and every drill held by this district, I specifically go to every lockdown drill. To make sure all protocols are being followed the way they should be. Our lockdown system is also tested weekly to make sure the actual mechanics of the lockdown system uh, are working via the. The blue strobes, the doors locking, the PA system and everything else. So you know the Shell acronym? It's a shelter in place, hold in place, evacuation, lockdown, lockout. Shell doesn't exist anymore. So uh, people who are familiar, it's going to be the same, but it's going to be secure lockout. The, the hold in place, they're just, they're just, yeah, they're changing it up. Yeah. So the acronym Shell won't be there.
Uh, New York State is changing the name, so we have to make some adjustments to our language.
We'll be installing an electronic gate behind Douglas Graffling, similar to what we did behind the Horace Greeley press box and bleachers. This will be, give us opportunity to monitor who goes it, uh, when that gate is open and closed, also set a schedule to it. Upgrading cameras and installing new cameras is another perennial thing that we do yearly. We actually just installed two cameras in the parking lots of Bell and Seven Bridges on the light posts, which are pretty cool because they're hybrid cameras and their power source. They have battery packs where when the lights are on, the battery charges fully through the night and during the day, the cameras just run on their battery source. Um, I don't know if you've seen them or not, but they're noticeable when you go up to Seven Bridges in the middle of Bell. Our biggest um, upgrade and implementation for security next year would be to upgrade our two-way radio system, which is the walkie talkies. The upgrade would make the reception of these walkie talkies much better. So clear to go through every building. They would also have the ability to communicate from school to school within the district. Also looking to put an internal emergency app for communications during emergencies throughout the schools. CRG mapping, we currently have here at the high school. You'll notice some of the numbers on the top of all our uh, exterior doors. The CRG mapping also notes where our ADR is located, the utility shut offs, all our panels, um, door numbers or whatnot. So these CRG maps are shared with all first responders to make it as easy as possible for a first responder who isn't familiar with the building to know exactly where they need to go and what they need to do. We will extend this over to our middle schools and our elementary schools.
Yeah, and it just, this is in process now. We've received the drafts of them. So the budgetary item is to put the external. Numbering on doors and to do any of the physical plant work that is asked of the CRG maps.
But those maps, I'm sorry, those maps only go to first responders. They're not findable anywhere else, correct?
They are transmitted to first responders. They're within our schools. So our internal personnel would have access to them so that we're all, basically, so we're all talking the same language um, in there. So it's not. Something that we would distribute out to other people. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because it's really for. First responders and school personnel to be able to say. An exact coordinate and a location and a door number so that you could respond as quickly as possible to that location that's uniform throughout the entire state CRG.
I don't know if you can see, but in each one of those busses, like L 17. So if first responders would be on here in L 17, they could just go straight to where they need to go. Um. So obviously saving money is part of every budget and here in the facility department, we're no different. We've streamlined all our purchasing to very few vendors. So it gives a little bit of leverage on um, the ability to negotiate discounted prices for some of our supplies. Lowering fuel and energy costs can be achieved by really adjusting our occupied and unoccupied schedule, depending on the events that are happening in our building and really fine tuning that better. We've also installed and do install more of our energy efficient appliances and HVAC units, which are the heat pumps that I discussed in previous slides. We've been updating our lighting fixtures as we change the ceiling grids to two by twos to the newer LED flat, LED panels. Um, purchasing new electric vehicles will help on the fuel cost of our fleet. And the district is also part of the cooperative dynamic electric supply purchasing, which allows us to receive the most competitive pricing on electric. So another, another way we uh, try to be a little more about budget conscious is negotiating. Fair contracts with our vendors and contractors. We actually look very, we work very closely with our contractors to see what we could do in-house, even a project of theirs to lower the cost of any project. Um, this next part is probably my pride and joy of being a sales director and our whole department, our in-house projects. I think we could really. Save as much money as possible performing these. Our most recent project was renovating the main office here at the high school. We changed out the ceiling, new lights, painted the trim, painted the walls, did new flooring, um, which was a huge task for our department to complete. We had that quoted at around 85 to 90,000 dollars for a contractor to do it. The only expenses we had in cost were materials and a little bit of overtime, a little bit over the February break. Um, saving the district over $55,000 for that one project alone. So if we could schedule and plan accordingly for more of these projects in the coming year. I don't know if you guys saw the main office screen. So here's the actual budget. This first slide is mostly salaries and items associated with what's negotiated between Chapel bus school district and um. The bargaining you at CSA for the facility department. The uh, the department salary was. Scheduled to go up by 1.2, uh, 1.25% via contract negotiations. This next slide is what we use on a day-to-day basis. Um. We've adjusted this budget to only have an increase at about, for less than one and a half percent. The biggest increase would be in our contractual line and our electricity line. But we kept it at 1.5% by lowering our heating, fuel and telephone service and repair line. Our operation and maintenance line um, has a variance of a little bit of over one and a half percent. Uh, this small increase is just to be able to really continue with the rising costs of repair, landscaping, equipment and everything else that seems to be skyrocketing. Our five-year facility maintenance plan has the biggest uh, increase of about 38%. This 38% is mostly dedicated to the two-way radio system. Um, changing out, because it's not just buying radios, it's changing out the whole system so they can communicate school to school and district wide.
That's the safety and security line?
Correct. Correct. As you can see, it went from 100 to 350. So that's the biggest jump.
And would we expect that to be an ongoing cost or we expect it to stabilize and come back? The one-time cost. Once, it's great. Yeah, great. And this is also, we had received um, FEMA money related to COVID that we're allocating towards to be able to do this project. Yeah, we already have that money. So it's a hundred percent.
So this final slide is uh, the whole meat and potatoes of the budget. Um, in a nutshell, where it's a little bit over $400,000, which is a total increase of 3.3%. Mostly because of that security. Um, this district is really like no other district. I visited a lot of them. Um, I shown as, that I showed in this presentation, so the department, you know, we're responsible for turning on the lights to doing giant renovation projects, which is great. What impresses me the most about not only this district, but this department is that we are a department and district of action. Um. We really strategize, organize and execute all plans effectively and efficiently. And that's it. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to present our budget. If there's any questions.
Okay, yeah, sure. We could, we could print out it that larger.
Last year we cut like 10,000 bucks at the end of the year for the snow. Did we run into a problem with that or?
Yes.
We did.
Yeah, it, it, so it was used from different overtime lines. But we.
We had some icy mornings. We had some icy mornings.
One snow day.
Right, right. So, so there definitely has been people coming in early and staying late to make sure that their roads have been salted, that the.
So that was a bad item to cut.
Right, right. Yeah. So, but the overtime line um, is lower than expected. So it balances out.
Okay.
But yeah.
This was actually our first real winters in a while.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. Well, you spoke it into existence.
I told Josh last year that we had a little winter. I was like, yes.
Publicly, yes, correct, yes.
Um. Sometimes when you upgrade to newer, the maintenance becomes more difficult. So with the new HVAC systems going in. We're, I, I, I was a little confused. We're paying one price basically to maintain the, and that's it? Like a one contractual dollar figure a year?
The agreement we have with Atlanta Westchester?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, okay, great.
It's, it's an all-inclusive maintenance agreement on all of them. On all our uh, HVAC units.
Cool.
We signed that last year and.
And we're, we're locked into that number.
Yeah.
Here's another one. Sorry. Um, so. You mentioned a number of things in there that we're going to a more electric. Power source, the um. The carts, the uh, heat pumps. Which sounds great, but do we have any concerns around electrical supply? Because it seems like we're going to be potentially drawing a lot more electricity than we have been in the past. Do we need to like upgrade anything to make all this feasible or we think we're in good shape?
The, the upgrades we have to make are for really the HVAC units in the bottom project and the uh, gym and the cafeterias for the little. The little things like vehicles and carts and we have plenty of power in-house to be able to do that.
And it seems like it's much more economical when you guys do things in-house, like the office, as opposed to, to um, getting another contractor to do it. So are we making plans to do that across the board? Whenever you guys can handle something, we're just letting you guys do it first?
Correct. If we can, I mean, there's also.
Right, there's a limit to what, yeah.
There, there is a limit to what uh, the department can do and unfortunately there's also sometimes time constraints.
Right, you said you did, did it over February break, you said.
Correct. So those are great opportunities to be able to do projects, um, unless we could work something out with the admin of the school itself to be like.
Move them.
Can you not use this section for a week? So uh, but it, 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 it's, it's, it's a dance, but yes, we'll try to do more.
But if it's a way for the district to save a lot of money, it might be worth somebody moving out of their office for a week to save, you know, a substantial amount of money.
For example, even just off top, I have the potential savings of doing the seven bridges uh, upper and lower commons. I mean, those could be priced at again. 30 to 40,000 dollars each. We could probably do it for 10.
So you couldn't use those rooms for a week, but it might be, it's obviously worth it financially.
Not on wood, summer. So we don't have to move anybody. Yeah.
Awesome. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Maria.
Thanks, Mara.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And if you could give that to Josh and Jamie can hop back up here. Josh is going to do the second part of our budget presentation.
Today, we're going to focus on the non-instructional and revenue, really looking at the first item in this strategic question, the budget and operations. And looking about how we can be fiscally responsible throughout the, throughout the budget. Um, again, we focus our budget when we create anything along the five strategic priorities. And this is all really going to be on number five around the modernized systems and, and working through that. Just to review, the budget increase is 2.59% um, or a 3.6 million dollar increase with a tax levy increase of 2.31%. Um, and this is a tax compliant budget. Um, just reviewing some of our expenditures, you could see that the, there's that large increase in debt service, which we'll talk a little bit about. That's offset by the decrease in capital transfer. Um, the technology large decrease is offset by the increase in. The BOCs line and the rest of it is pretty much um, a static between zero and two percent, um, along with what we heard from Mario today. Um, something again to talk about, right? Our salaries and benefits are going up by 2.87%. But every single other category, the increase is um, only 1.89%. Um, the, the question that I, I also want to talk about is just our salaries and benefits make up about 71.26% of our budget. Um, where only about a little bit over a quarter is the rest of the, our budget. Um, one of the things that I want. Um, one of the things that I want to mention is about, if we look at the state inflation factor of two point nine four percent, um, questions, think about how are we um have a budget that's below that um in maintaining that? So one of the things is our salaries are forty-eight percent of our budget, showing a two point nine three percent increase. Those are locked in with our employment contracts that we have. Um, our benefits is, are also doing well in terms of increases. We have a really good health plan that doesn't have a high increase, and ERS and TRS are not going up. Um, where you do see some of those increases that are above inflation, um such as our transportation is going up by three point one seven percent. Um, and then other costs are increasing slightly more than the inflation factor, but some of us, so much of our budget is made up of salary and benefits that is beating the inflation factor, that we're able to keep those costs down um throughout the budget process. Um, talking about the non-instructional budget, we'll talk about general support, transportation, community services, and the undistributed funds. The first part is the general support. This is the Board of Education, our central administration, our finance and auditing, legal, buildings to ground, um, and some special items. Um, the Board of Education, the District Clerk's Office, and the District Meetings Office, we're able to keep flat, um, except for contractual increases in salary. Um. Yeah. Um, the, yep. Again, right, again, in the chief, in the Chief School Administration offers, um, everything, we're able to maintain supplies and contracts pretty much flat, except for um salaries and benefits. Um, i- in the Business Administration Office, there are some contracts that we're not renewing that show a decrease, as well as um we had some employment changes that are showing a decrease in our salary lines, um, and in our auditing, internal claims, external, um with everything that we're looking at, we're not showing any increase. Um, legal, hu- HR, leadership development, public information, again, um, no increases yet for salaries and benefits, um and then a couple contractual increases um in there, just because we have some multi-year contracts that are increasing. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Sure, public information is our public information officer's salary. Um, so David, right, not mentioning, um, the contractual um is, we have contracts with parts of our website that are in there, um with our alert systems, um, things like that are in the contractual piece of it. Supplies are purchasing new mics, purchasing new cameras, um that are used for public information um in there. So those are, that's really, and then, then printing reproduction is, um photocopies, making some flyers that we would hand out as part of that. That's the entire components of that budget. Um, our unallocated insurance, um and we started to talk about that, this is essentially flat, except we are expecting a significant increase in our insurance with nicer. Um, so we're beginning to budget for that. Um, that is pretty much universal around the insurance industry with um any insurance carrier is in line with the increases that nicer is bringing upon the, that we have with the district as well. Um, in terms of transportation, um, this is increasing by three two point two three percent, which is the contractual increase in terms of what the transportation inflation number is. Um, and that is how our contract with Chappaqua Transportation is allocated. So that in- increases in the, in there as well. Um, and then there's a slight increase in our athletic trip transportation, which has been increasing because our sports seems to be doing really well. Um, again, just a reminder, our transportation distance limes are walking not to exceed point five mile for K eight, um and one mile for nine through twelve. So that's all included in that, in that budget line. Um, just some of the highlights about transportation, we have thirty-nine buses, twenty vans, seventeen special ed vans, twenty monitors. Um, we don't get charged for any emergency services, um and we don't get charged for any in-district runs between nine and two, um and we don't get charged for any um injured students. So if they need a special accommodation because they're in crutches, we don't get any, we don't get billed for that from our transportation contractor. Community service, um, we have uh census that we do and that work every year. That's a contract that gets done where we get mailed out to pay for information that gets collected by the district. Um, that is a contractual increase, um that is increasing. Our undistributed, our employee benefits, debt service, inter-fund transferred, I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, ERS, we talked about sort of the percentage of the ERS percentage going up slightly, um and TRS going up, going down, but our salaries are increasing, so that's the increase there. Um, FICA increases with our salary increases, that's the same percentage. Um, and the rest of it is pretty much similar. Um, you could see that our health insurance active is not increasing as much as our health insurance inactive. So that was due to, we had a significant number of retirements last year. Many of those were after the budget process, so the budget is catching up with that. So that was a switch of active and inactive um with there, and then the rest of it is remaining pretty much flat. Um, our debt service, um, this increase again is due to, we're going to go to bond um in May of this time, and so the new bond and ban interest is on there. So we anticipate an increase for next year because we're paying the ban interest that was at a higher interest rate than we expect to get for the bond. When we talk to our fiscal advisors, sort of doing those two bands and bonding now was a smart move because interest rates have fallen since those two bands, and now that we're doing the full bond. So in next year's budget, we're going to see a little bit higher of debt service. Um, but we anticipate that to fall a bit in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then we have some debt falling off in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So that's our anticipated, those are estimates because we don't have the results back from the bonding yet. Um, but that's what we anticipate in conjunction in speaking with our fiscal advisors. Um, and our inter-fund transfers is our transfer to capital and our transfer for our summer school programs. In there, you could see the drop-off um in the transfer to capital to offset the uh debt service. And here's just a slide to more clearly show that our debt service and transfer capital are basically flipping. That two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar decrease is this year only because in the two thousand eighteen bond schedule, there was, when, when that was created with everyone, there was a smaller payment for the next school year, so we're just passing that on to the taxpayers rather than, um, so that we're, we're not holding that into transfer capital or anything else. Um, here again is just our revenue side of the budget, that um property taxes going up by two point three one percent, and we're seeing a little bit of an increase in our state aid as well. We're appropriating less fund balance so that could build up our reserves. Um, and then the smaller items are going up and going down a little bit, and we talked about our charges for services and our use of our money and property, um, where we have a little bit lower on the use of money and property, just to do, interest rates are falling, and then a little bit increase in our charges for services because our facilities are being used more often. Um, and here is just sort of a percentage of our budget, of our revenue, um, and the majority of our district's revenue is made up by our real property taxes, and then our state aid making up about nine percent um of it, and then the rest are smaller portions. And then I just want to talk about our fund balances. Um, we do anticipate being in a similar position that we were last year. So I'm predicting that we will be able to keep our four percent of our unappropriated um fund balance and also increase um our reserves, our, our TRS reserve is what I'm proposing, to increase that by a million dollars so that we could start to increase our restricted reserves, so that we could start to put that away, that if um ERS and TRS or retirement contributions increase by a high amount within one year, um, we don't see the effect of that within that year's school budget. And just again, some property tax information, the way we calculate our property tax from the previous year, we take that, we have a growth fa- pretty high growth factor this year of one point oh five three. Um, and that is then fed in with some exemption, exemptions. Um, the CPI is above two percent. Put all that through to subtract out building aid, we have a levy limit of two point three one percent. I do want to say is that I'm just starting to receive the tax rolls. So the, the tax growth rate factor is always a year behind. Um, and as we're getting the tax rolls, we're seeing that those are much higher than this growth rate factor. So likely, the tax rate increase will be less than that two point three one percent. Um, but yeah, sure. So, so once we get the total tax rolls, we know how, what the valuation of this Chappaqua School District's portion of, of the town's tax levies are. Those percent increases um of both of those tax rolls was higher than that point five three growth rate factor. So what that means is that, that tax levy limit of two point three one percent, um, the actual tax rate increase will not be at two point three one percent because the rolls have driven, risen more than that growth rate factor. There's more. Yeah, there, there's more, y- yeah, so there's more, there's more amount of taxes collected to distribute that on, uh, yes.
Do you have a way of characterizing yet how much of a difference we're talking about or not yet?
Um, I, so I'm just getting there, but my guess is it'll be between one and two percent from there is what the, it would be depending on which town. Um, I, as I'm working through the numbers, it might be a little bit lower than that, but I'm just going to estimate between one and two right now.
Uh, last year, we had no growth factor, but this year we do, and then it will level off again, right? Because we're not continually building new homes.
Yeah, it, it will level off again. Um, based on, I did an analysis of sort of what's coming onto the rolls. There's still, I think, for the next school year right now, construction that's in progress.
The last little bit.
That is not, yeah, that's not on the rolls yet, so um predicting it could be. And remember also, this is about a year behind. So we should, so next year, we likely should see a growth factor as well, um that's given to us by the state in the end.
So for another year or two, we'll see it, and then once the big developments are done, it'll go.
Likely level off, yeah, yep. Um, and then again here, right, so, and this is sort of what I was talking about before, is that this growth rate factor and everything put in to give the two point three one percent levy growth, that growth factor is, only includes additional um taxation that it, and additional units that are on the market, physical buildings and things like that. So, um, so that, that wa- is why it gets offset. Um, and here is the full calculations with the numbers of our, with our um deductions and the things that we take off before we go add back the current year's things to get to our um, our property tax cap. And then just to look at what happened, so there's a vote on five twenty. If it's approved by the, the voters, which is fifty percent, um, it gets adopted. If it's disapproved, um, we have a um second budget vote on six seventeen, um, or the board could adopt a contingency bu- budget um from there. So that's, would be to go to a contingency budget. Um, what is a contingency budget? So if the voters reject the budget with fifty percent, a contingency, contingency budget may not include a levy higher than the prior year's levy. Um, and then there are restrictions on what expenses we put on a variety of increases, including administrative, some program and capital expenses to get to that zero percent levy growth. Um, and information will be included in the budget notice about exactly the administrative program and capital portions of that contingency budget. Yeah. It should be fifty percent. Yep. Yeah, that should say fifty percent in there. It's, it's a simple majority. And then the reduction of the contingency budget is um three million two hundred and thirty-six thousand three eighty-seven. And how do we get there? Again, reducing expenditures, personnel program, non-personnel, no, no, no transfer of capital, and use of fund balance and reserves. Okay, if you have questions for voter information, contact Lisa, um, two-three-eight-seven-zero-hundred. Here's her email address. Um, to be able to vote on May, residents must be registered for general political elections within the district. Residents must be uh US citizens, residents of the school district for thirty days and of eighteen years of age. Um, and then again, to here, right, make sure, register any business day in the office up to May fifteenth, which is five days prior to the election, applications for absentee ballots. Um, are for members of voting, please contact the district clerk for that. Um, and there's information on our website. And here are the qualifications and information for running for school board. Um, there are two open seats for three-year terms beginning on July first. And here is the information up there. We'll make sure that this is posted on the website. And questions?
Okay, so. So, um, Josh, I would, it would be really helpful for me if you could, um, I noticed that, like, starting from, I guess, slide fifty-one, you know, starting with Board of Ed and Central Admin, um, Finance and Auditing, all of those, um, I guess, kind of like charts, where you show last year, this year, and then what we're expecting to see. But it would, for me, it would be helpful to see like trends and patterns going back maybe five years before COVID, all the way up to now, just to see where we're at and how we're trending in, in all of those areas and, and going forward. And that's with same thing with like whether it's revenues, um, and any of that, spending, all of that.
So each of the lines, the totals and the budget lines going back five years?
Yeah, the, the adopted, the approved budget and then the year-end actuals.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions?
I asked all my questions, but I'm sorry.
Yep.
I asked mine.
Matt, do you have more?
Good. Okay.
Okay, that's the end of the budget presentations, and we've already given the community update, so.
We have already given the community update, that's right. Uh, so it's now time for committee reports. We were just together a few days ago, so there may not have been any committees. I already explained what happened at the PTA exec committee, and I will do that going forward. Okay. So it's now time for public comment. Uh, we welcome public comments. In respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. Are there any public comments tonight?
Hi, Warren Gottlieb. I'm a parent in the district. I don't know if this is on. It sounds like it's on. Um, on, on the way over, I did hear uh the comments about the resolution um with respect to uh Shaw Pearlson and that there's going to be uh some form of uh factual investigation. And um I understand uh that, why there uh is a need to do that. But I, and this isn't meant necessarily as a criticism, it's just, I actually think it's something that if you're not thinking about, you should be thinking about a lot, which is whether it's inadvertent or intentional, and I don't think it's intentional, it comes across as a lack of transparency. And I don't know what to tell you to do about that because uh on the one hand, as a taxpayer in this district, I don't necessarily want the district exposed to undue uh, you know, litigation risk. But at the same time, um, I also think a real effort has to be made to parse out what can be reported back to the community and how quickly it can be done. And, you know, I understand that a memorandum of law discussing potential liability as applied to the facts or lack of liability is not something that you want to share, and it's covered by attorney-client privilege. But there should be a way for a. But there should be a way for a separate document that's not too overly wordsmith that just is a factual recitation as to what happened. And I say this because I, I really don't want a recurrence, other than last week, I don't think I've been here the entire school year. And I have appreciated what the board has tried to do since, you know, from, you know, pretty much October 2023 forward. But you also have to understand the position that Jewish families are in, particularly, and this is not a failing of, of any of you, our district has some very unique issues that are making this problem a lot tougher than I think some of our peer districts are having. And I do think some of it finds its root in the early onset of Westpac. And what has been reported in the news and is coming out of Congress about that organization and the nexus in this community. And I'm sorry for that for you guys, not because I have responsibility for it, but that's kind of what's landed on you here. And I don't think it's going away anytime soon. So I really, I really hope you think a lot about transparency. Can I just have one, just a quick?
Yeah, let us, let us do the motion, Warren, hang on. Can I have a motion for an additional minute?
Second.
All in favor?
Because, because my fear is, is that it's a, it's a boiling pot. And you can't control everything that goes on, on any given day, and I get that. And the lack of transparency could just be turning up the heat to the point where when the next thing occurs, it's going to be really bad. And, you know, I'm as upset and angry as any parent, and I could come up here and tell you a million things that I'm really upset about, about this situation. But at the end of the day, I've lived here for 20 years, I love the people in this town and I don't want to see it go through any pain. But we are in a unique situation and we're going to be sitting with this for some time. And I think the best thing we can do is just lay it out there as best as you can to the community and just realize that, don't look at your peer jurisdictions, we have some very unique problems here. Thank you.
Hi, Roger Klepper, resident in the community for 23 years now, two kids, came through the district. You know, I think also responding to, to the International Day incident and, and, you know, unfortunately, this, I mean, this seems to be a pattern that, you know, people like my friend Warren have been very, very vigilant in, in pointing out and, and addressing and maybe some of us have, have been less so. I think what I'm not, I mean, one of the most devastating things to the Jewish community since, since October 7th is this feeling of, I mean, almost surprising feeling, you know, with the outbreak of antisemitism, that we've seen this, this surprising feeling of being alone, that the Jewish community cares, those that attack us care, but it feels like there's this complacency of the masses that is, is really shocking. Because it's generally not, I mean, my rabbi as a child during his early years was marched arm in arm in Selma with, with, with Dr. Martin Luther King. And, and, and I think the Jewish community has, has generally cared for others and cared about others, you know, in ways commensurate that we would care about ourselves. And I think what I'm not hearing, and I did not hear last week, we need the district to be vigilant. And I'm not, and vigilant stems from caring. And I think the district cares, but I don't think they care enough. And call it unconscious bias. Maybe there's a view that the Jewish community, because of our numbers here, because of other factors, that we don't need that level of care. But we do. We, we need it very badly. I mean, yeah, I just, I just, I just read a book, Balkan Ghosts. It was actually a book alleged to inform President Clinton in, in the Balkans in, in the early years of, of that conflict. It wasn't a book about Jews, it was, it was really a history. What's that? Oh, can I have an extra minute?
Yeah, can I have a motion for an additional minute? All in favor?
This wasn't a book about Jewish history, but of course invariably, it is a who's who of atrocities across the world that you come across. In the last chapter of the book was about Greece, Thessaloniki, then called Salonika. I had no idea in the year 1900 was the only European city with a majority Jewish population, close to 50%. At the time of the onset of World War in 19, not World War II, there were 43,000 Jews there, 40,000 of them were killed. Now, how did they get in Thessaloniki? Well, they were there for 500 years because they were safe under the Ottomans. Where did they come from? They came from Spain, Portugal and Italy 500 years earlier, where they had been for hundreds of years, until they were chased away by the Spanish Inquisition. This is the history of the Jewish people. Now we are here and this is your responsibility. You need to care.
Eli Benson, I have one kid in the district and one, another one soon. I, I know a lot of the focus has been on antisemitism, but I don't think it's, I think we're, the Jews are just at the front line of this, so we're very sensitive to this. I think it's an American issue. And I think if the school focus simultaneously, I mean, what happened was a huge mistake. But the school, I think, also has to focus on events that remember 9/11. I don't know where everyone in this room was on 9/11, but there was, the, the flag, the people of that country were celebrating on 9/11. Okay? So when a Jewish person is sensitive to that flag and other Americans are not, there's something wrong. You have to have things that are very American, remember the history, September 11th. I don't know all the facts, but I've been told that there's no memorial special, special remembrance day for all the high schoolers and the middle schoolers and the elementary schoolers. It has to happen. These are important things. Forget the antisemitism, it's an American thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move now to item three, approvals and ratifications. We'll do 3.1 and 3.2, which is to accept the minutes of the March 10th and March 12th Board of Education meetings. Can I have a motion for 3.1 and 3.2, please? Can I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, 3.3 is the trademarks policy that, this is now the second reading and adoption. We'll do the motion first and then see if there was any feedback or anything about this. So can I have a motion for 3.3, please? Was there any feedback?
No feedback, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, all those in favor?
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I'll move 4.1, can I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
There's no 4.1.
There is no 4.2 tonight, so now we're up to five. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that item, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It's recommended the Board of Education approves 5.1 through 5.12 tonight. Does anyone want to take anything off of the consent agenda tonight? Okay, so can I have a motion then for 5.1 through 5.12?
I'll move.
I'll second.
And just so folks know what we're doing, we're doing some change orders and the standard CSE issues, budget transfers, it's, it's pretty nominal stuff. All those in favor? Okay. Number six, we're going to acknowledge receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent, 6.1 through 6.5. Lisa's okay if I do all five of those at once? Yeah, okay, so 6.1 through 6.5, I will move that, can I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Could you just go?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Could you just go over like?
Oh, what they are, of course, yes, of course, yeah. So, yeah. Yeah, Chappaqua continuing ed contracts, the CBIZ valuation group, and then we have three different consultants helping us out. Again, these are amounts that are low that the superintendent can approve on her own.
The consultants are the third-party evaluators for sports.
Third-party evaluators for selecting.
Teams.
Teams, like people's participation on team sports.
So that's 6.3 to 6.5. And then what about 6.2?
Josh, do you want to talk about that contract?
CBIZ is a company that values our fixed assets and does the amortization schedules and does all of the work about making sure that our fixed assets policies at the end of the year are ready to go to our auditors. So they do that every year for us.
Great, thank you. I think it's nice to just go over them quickly, just because.
No, I should have read them.
We have the backup and not everybody.
No, I should have read them. So again, we'll do the vote since it didn't quite happen all the way. Can we have all those in favor? Thank you. Under seven, we're going to acknowledge receipt of a change order approved by the superintendent, which is for some electric work because of some concrete. I don't know if I can explain that any better, maybe Josh wants to.
Josh, you want to go over, I know you mentioned it in the.
Yeah, so basically the pad that you actually saw on the, in the work session, Khan Ed said that the original size of it that was specked out was not large enough for the electrical equipment that needs to go there. So we needed to make it larger, which necessitated the need for a change order for the concrete.
So can I have a motion for 7.1?
Second.
All in favor? Nothing under eight, and so number nine, notice future meetings, March 26th, that's next Wednesday at 7 o'clock. Before that, we'll have a work session about adding an ex officio student member of the board, and then we'll be together not until mid-April in the morning at the Ed Center on April 22nd. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn at 8:32?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.